Well, I'm not used to doing this, but I want to welcome you to the School District of Oconee County's March 9th School Board Work Session. I'm Joe Rukat. I'm standing in for Jerry. We moved his name plate over to the side. He's not feeling well right now, so we'll talk about that in a moment. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Eastman family on the loss of their son, Lee. That occurred last Thursday. Our thoughts and prayers also go out to Jerry, Jerry Lee, because he's going through chemo. He's had three chemo sessions already last week, and he's quite tired. He's has, he's been identified as having non-Hodgkin's lymphoma of the liver. The doctors say he's supposed to pull through without a problem, which is quite impressive. And at this time, if you, we'd like to take this as a moment of silence, and if you want to participate, please do so. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Without objection, we will approve tonight's agenda. The March 9th work session agenda has been approved. Thank you. I believe we have some young, young people here that are going to do something for us, and I believe the Blue Ridge is going to start it off, right?
Jay's bringing the list and the pledge.
All right.
All right.
There you go.
Hey, can we get him to move over? Taylor would like for you to be on camera, so we're going to put you right in the middle right there.
Whatever he wants to do.
Just so we can see him, and then he can turn and look at the flag. All right, you can do it right there. That'll be fine.
Yeah, that'll be good.
There you go. Put your hand over your heart. There you go.
Hi, and it's a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. I'm Ms. Hammond, the principal of Blue Ridge, and I have some wonderful people that are going to help me do a presentation this evening. We are going to talk to you about the Blue Ridge Garden. We have a garden in our school, and we are so excited about what we have grown so far. And this was a grant from Clemson. We wrote this back in the spring of last year and received it in March of 2019. Ms. Merritt and Ms. Brun wrote the grant, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Merritt, and I'm going to let her talk to you about the grant, and these children are going to present the part that they play in our garden.
All right, so our vision for the garden really was to get students engaged in learning, to take pride and responsibility for their learning and what they were growing, and partner with the community. And I have some girls up here who actually helped with building the garden, putting the layers of the garden in, planting the garden, and actually harvesting the garden. So I'm going to let them go ahead and start. You can start.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brooklyn Law. I will be talking about how we assembled the base of the garden. It all started by taking big pieces of wood and marrying them together and making the for a base shape. It took about two weeks to build. It was really fun. My favorite part was planning how we were going to build it. That is my favorite part because I love planning. My name's Lucy, and this, my, I enjoy planting and trying new foods from our garden. My favorite was the carrots because it was fun when we got to pull it out and watching it grow and looking at the different colors they are. And yeah.
My name is Kaylee, and when we started to, when we started placing the soil, we had to do many different layers and evening them out. But it took a while because we had many layers, and some of them were not there yet. But soon we were ready and done to get the plants to be put in.
My name is Brooklyn Thompson, and I am in fourth grade, and I am going to be talking about how we planted it. First, we took a stick and made a hole every inch in the flower bed. Then we planted sweet potatoes, tomatoes, and more vegetables. We also had to put water on the plants. Then a couple of weeks later, the garden started to grow. Then we put a, we put a sticks behind each plant to tell what they are, and that's how you grow a garden.
So summer day, what she did was she got to harvest some of our sweet potatoes, and she learned about how they grow under the ground and how they grow on vines. And some of the sweet potatoes that we had were massive. They were as big as some of my kids' heads. How big they have to be. And so this is just one of the many projects that we have going on at Blue Ridge Elementary. We are trying to be a green step school, so we've also got things like the bees and recycling along with our garden. And our next steps as far as the garden are to get the community involved. We've already reached out to the community to help get resources that we need because we were not granted the money for this next year. So we've reached out to the community to help provide some of those things, and we're also wanting to take the vegetables and the things that we grow from the garden and give our students experience with those different vegetables because some of them would never have tried them if it wasn't for us planting them in the garden.
And this, I've got to tell Shannon to start this, but this is kind of scrolling through, and it shows you the different, the building, and then it'll show you the layering and the different things that out here are doing, how the kids were involved in. And I also want to thank Mr. Mathis for coming tonight because his class and Mr. Collins' class have really been the ones going out and working in the garden and doing the harvesting with it. But it's been great to watch these children. They're the ones doing this, and we appreciate Kristen and Frankie writing the grant that was given to us, or we were found out about it, we write it, too, because we are our school with Blue Ridge Council. And so we said, let's try it. We got it. We're excited. We didn't get it again, so we're going to have to now reach out to the community to find ways to get things to plant and get our oil.
Let's get to that.
Yeah, that was the sweet potato. So, but thank you.
Whoa. We're going to have a feast tonight.
And I actually, one of our school, we council members made me a sweet potato pie. I would want all sweet potatoes. It was delicious. I love sweet potato pie, and she already canceled one of them, it was her name, and she says, "Made with Blue Ridge sweet potatoes." So it was really neat. So, but thank you for letting us present tonight, and thank you, girls, for helping us out with this. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good time. Mr. Smith?
Good evening. I'm from Elmenary School. Certainly happy to be here tonight, and we're in a, recently, over the last maybe month and a half, we've had lots of math and science activities, and so we wanted to share just a little bit of a combination of those, of what we've been doing, and then we have an actually something here that we'll show. This is Corbin, our assistant principal's here tonight. Ms. Shawna Wright, one of our teachers, is here tonight, and we'll introduce our students in just a moment. One of the things that we have on the pictures here is called Boom Town, and over the course of the last, I think, year, year and a half, we've accumulated a number of Lego kits through some of the funding from the district, and we've also, Ward Warner has donated monies for science, and so this was an opportunity for students to build these booms. We had multiple students in the fourth grade to participate. We believe in having as many opportunities as possible so as many students that are interested can participate. And certainly with the hands-on activity, you have to have lots of stuff so everybody can get their hands on it. I think those kits go in a bulk of $400, $500, $700, depending on the amount of components and electrical things, so those are much more expensive than a shelf Lego kit, so we appreciate all the support there. It's a great collaborative activity. They had a little book there that they were following. They've got an engineering plan, working together on a number of things, and where they were writing their results. So very much looking at covering all the science standards and inquiry. That's a boom there, and some of them have the actual gears and computer chips in it that helps eventually they can program it in there or code it to move. Extra slide here, just a promotion. The Seneca Fire Department has many, many smoke alarms, and so if anybody's interested or however this gets framed, if you live in an area outside of Seneca, they will work with your area's fire department in getting a smoke alarm. The state has a grant with the National Fire Safety Commission, so they will actually come to your house and do a check and put it in, and these are the 10-year models, the top of the line, and it's, there's so many statistics about how important those are in our, on our home, so reach out to Seneca Fire if you're interested in that, or like I said, go come to your home. Our science fair, and here's Ethan, Dr. Giannis is here. Ethan's going to tell the title of his science fair project.
So me, me and my friend Carter did a science fair project called Shapeshifter. What we tried to figure out is it, so we had three Paddle Derby cars. There was a block car that came without any shaping at all, a wedge car, and a flat car that basically, it's flat until you get to the end, it has a little slope.
And you found that it's important to have a certain design that'll make your car go quicker?
And we found out that the flat car actually went fastest, and me and Carter will probably do the flat car the next Paddle Derby.
When do you have April the 4th?
Um, guilty. Wait, oh, Paddle Derby.
Yeah, so he did a lot of technical research for his upcoming race. That's impressive. Look forward to seeing your car race. These were a couple of other projects. We had the weather, we had some of the things with sugar. We had multiple students who will be participating in the, in the Southern Westing University does a regional science fair, not this Friday, but the next Friday. This is an experiment with the apples, how quickly they're browning. Each year, two of the, or the elementary schools have competed for two spots to compete in the regional Anderson-Hokumie Pickens Jet Toy, and actually this year, both Northside teams placed to go to, I think it this year is Pendleton for the AOP Regional. And two of the last four years, Northside students have been the regional champs and were, had the opportunity to participate in the making of an airplane in Oconee County, so kind of a neat thing, but they certainly have a lot of collaborative activities with Jet Toy, and again, Ward Warner has been instrumental in supplying the kits, which I think average above close to $500 or more in investment so that students can have that opportunity. These were our two teams. One other activity, One Seneca Science Night, was maybe two Thursdays ago. Ravenell students and Blue Ridge students and Northside students, so we had over, probably over 250, 300 students. Clemson University partnered with One Seneca area and had a number of activities. This happened to be Dr. Shepherd, who is a professor with NASA, and some robotics and virtual reality, and students had the opportunity to put their headbands on and see a little bit about that. We had some other activities on building. Multiple Clemson students were there with things that they could share. Ms. Wright?
Okay. So our third graders have been working with this tiny thing. It's called Makey Makey, and it was made by some college students, and our district has them in, in the district technology department, and they loaned them to us for a few weeks. And first of all, the students did a lot of just playing around with it, finding out how to make circuits, and can you tell them a few things that are good conductors?
Um, we figured out that Play-Doh was actually a conductor, and we used a little foil on ours.
Okay. So what we did was we just made connections at first, and we found out that if you use a graphite pencil, you can make, and you use our computers, that you can actually make your pictures make sounds. So they drew with the graphic pencils, and then they connected with the circuits, and they could make the sounds. So then we took it a little bit further, and we created what we call our Operation Box, Pizza Box game. And so this is Abby, and Abby's game was called The Adventure of the Unicorn. So tell us a little bit about your game, Abby.
So...
So, tell them what we do.
We drew a unicorn, and Ms. Wright cut out the shapes, and we put things that we could find that fit what we drew, so we could pull them out to make an operation game.
Okay, and so, as you know from an operation game, the object is to reach in and get the thing without touching. And the unicorn is very picky about not being touched, and so every time you touch, she makes a noise. So, but if you are good and you're not nervous, you can get it out, and then you put it in the basket, and you win. So, they had a blast doing this, and we had to do a lot of, we had to fix a lot of them because we found out that inside, the pieces float around if we didn't put the little containers. So they had to actually make containers, so we learned how to make boxes. And they found out a lot about circuitry, and just like tonight, when we got here in traveling, it had come apart, and we were like, oh goodness, we've got to make it make noises, so. But we also had somebody that made a castle, we had somebody that made a pizza. What were a couple of the others? Uh, we had Adventures of Mario for those boys that were, and they just really had a great time, and a lot of problem solving that even I couldn't figure out, so they got to figure it out when it came to the computer. And if you turn the server round, it's just a website, but they had to do the coding, and then they had to find the sounds, and some of the children were also very creative and made their own sounds, and one of them would say, "Put that back, put that back." I thought that was very good. So this is what we've been doing in third grade in our technology.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Awesome job. I just wanted to apologize. I overlooked one individual. The Hamiltons and the LeCroy families. Mrs. Hamilton, which is Harry Hamilton's wife and Felicia's mom, passed away Friday, so I was out of town and I was not aware of that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Do we have any public comments?
We do. Ms. Amy Welch is up first.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Welch. I'm a teacher at Animals in Career Center, and I'm also here tonight to talk to you as a parent of students at every level of our district. I haven't written a formal speech, but I kind of want to talk to you from the heart. I'm very concerned about the proposed changes to the honor, honor graduate policy that's going to be discussed tonight, and I really want you to consider all students when you go through this, these discussions. And to give you a little bit of background, my student, my male child is in eighth grade in this little school. She's a restore student. She's an A and B student. She does really well in her classes. This past fall, we just recently had her diagnosed as dyslexic through GHS Children's Hospital, and she struggles in her English and her social practice classes. My concern with changing the GPA requirement for an honor graduate student from a 3.75 to a 4.0 is that you are eliminating the possibility for your general CP students to ever be recognized as honor graduates. As I'm sure you're aware, in order to achieve a 4.0 GPA as a CP student, you have to make 100 in every class that you take when you're in high school, and for most students, that's very, very challenging. I have only run into one student in my 11 years of teaching that has been able to accomplish that, and she has a phenomenal GPA, well above, actually above 5.0. But my concern for students like Chloe is that they can work really hard, they can earn high A's in their CP classes, and they still wouldn't be able to earn that graduation honor that a lot of our students really try to achieve. If you've spoken to very many high school students, they love to get scores, they love to have those honors at graduation, and I really, really believe that it would make it hard for these students to be able to achieve that 4.25 that would be necessary for them to be awarded with that, with that honor. The other side of what I want to talk about is as a teacher. Our students are high GPA-driven. A lot of them really focus on what is their GPA. They monitor it every time a grade is put in, and I think, I believe that raising that bar, although we want to continue to encourage our students to take academically rigorous courses, by raising that, that minimum, we are kind of fueling the fire of always being so driven by GPA. And as a career center teacher, whose courses are weighted as CP level courses, I have had some, the one student that I mentioned a minute ago that has a 5.0 GPA, looked at me two weeks ago when we were in Charleston for our career competition for DECA, and told me she's not willing to take my class next year. She wants to audit my class because if she takes my class and makes a 100 in my class, which she did this year, it will bring her GPA down. And I believe that as a district, we are investing millions of dollars into a new campus this year. A lot of students are excited about coming to the career center only to realize that when they come to our classes and they do really well, and they find their niche, they find their thing, it could possibly have a negative impact on a high GPA. And so when you're in these discussions tonight, I just urge you to consider all students and not just our high, high flyers or our high achieving students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there another one?
We also have Mr. Riddick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Seneca Middle School is well represented tonight. I'm the father of an eighth grader of Sun Camillo as well, and I wanted to come in and talk to you tonight about the tests and examinations policy that you're going to be presenting a little later. I actually want to speak in favor of this policy because I think it's a very good policy for the district. I can vividly remember when I was in high school, taking cumulative final exams. Now, I also vividly remember not liking it, so don't, don't think this is something that I, it was a good memory, but it, but it is something that I think is important. My wife and I were both very fortunate to attend a four-year university once we graduated from high school, and I'm going to go on record and tell you, I did not have great study habits in high school or college. I probably led natural ability, taking it through a lot of my classes. If I had gotten to college and had never taken a cumulative final exam in high school, I don't know that my life story would actually be the same. I don't know, I would have paid it for my freshman year of college. I knew what had to be done when it came time to take a final exam in college. My high school prepared me to go to college because of the classes I took, the manner in which those teachers taught those classes, and because I had to take those cumulative final exams. I was prepared when I got to college. The policy that you're going to get tonight, I hope that you know the background of it. I think it's important for the board to understand that Dr. Thorson and his administration have done a fantastic job of talking to all the stakeholders in our community and our schools to come up with the policy that you will see tonight. There's been several versions of this that have been out there, and it's been edited over time. The principals had a say in this, and I think this is probably something that was maybe even a little principal-led or even teacher-led to sort of talk about this. And so it started out there that everybody was going to need to take final exams all four years, and so then it got presented to the students and the student advisories, and they said, "Well, what about seniors? Maybe you can give us a little break as a senior to give us a reward." And so Dr. Thorson and administration didn't listen to that, and they, so they put something there about allowing seniors to be able to exempt out some finals. And then it came to the parent advisory committees, and so one of the things in there, originally it had, you need to have an A to be able to exempt out of that exam as a senior. And Oconee County is a blue collar community. There are a lot of students who are not going to be like me. They're not going to leave high school, and they're going to go to a four-year university. They're going to go, and they're going to get into the workforce, and that's very admirable because we need highly educated students to come out and go to our workforce. So why would we take a student who has to make an A as a senior, who he knows he or she's not going to college, and make them take a cumulative final exam if they didn't have an A, if they had a B or C? So Dr. Thorson and administration listened to that as well from the parents, and they sort of have, and they have put that in there that now we just have a C requirement as a senior. There's something in this policy that every person, every stakeholder has gotten to put in there. That's a true compromise. This is a policy that everybody can agree on, something in there is good for them, and that's why I think this is a good policy for our school district. Principals like it. Our students have gotten input. Our parents have gotten input, and it's all have come together in this policy that you're going to receive tonight. When I think back on that time of taking those cumulative exams, my eighth grader, she's taken three high school level courses, so this actually would affect her this year. She's not going to like this policy. The Blue Ridge Elementary students, when they get to high school, they're not going to like this policy. But I think it's important that the adults rely on their experience and their knowledge, and they understand what needs to be done to prepare our students to go to college. We spend a lot of time talking about the classes we're going to take, the GPAs that we have to make. There's a lot of things that go into whether you want to go to college or not. If we're going to spend and we're going to invest time in our students, we've got to prepare them in every manner. And if I was not required to take cumulative final exams when I was in high school, I would not have been prepared. And I don't think we, as a county, or we as a district, are preparing our students fully to go to college if we are not requiring them to take cumulative final exams. So I would really encourage you, as this comes up tonight, to look at this and know that the administration has really reached out to everybody and has come up with a great that the administration has really reached out to everybody and has come up with great compromises that I think really will benefit our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, moving on to discussion items. Ms. Simmons, I'm glad you're here because most of them are yours. We'll start with February financial report. Mrs. Moore.
Yes, sir. We all have a report. Just a couple of things I would say. Compared this year to last year, we are a little short in the collections from the county. The taxes are a little bit less this year than last year. And compare last year to this year as far as how much more our revenues are and our expenditures we're behind. So it's a difference of about $1.5 million. So just wanted you all to know that. And to let you know that I've been talking to the county folks about our budget schedule, calendar schedule. And so next, in April, first meeting in April, I'll bring you our first attempt at the budget, and you all can discuss that. And then in the second meeting, we can have first reading. And I've talked to Ms. Brock's assistant, and they are working on the schedule that they are going to let us know about later this week.
Any questions?
Questions from the report?
I guess not. Well, thank you. All right. Policy IKAA tests and examinations and exemptions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Simmons.
Okay. This is, the purpose of this policy is just mapping out how we evaluate the progress of our students. We made changes directly related to exams. Secondary students in grades nine through 11 will take the cumulative exams at the conclusion of each course. In addition, any seventh and eighth grade students taking courses for high school credit will also take cumulative exams at the conclusion of the course. We did put in an attendance requirement for seniors who do not miss more than five days in a full unit course, or more than three days in a half-unit course, and who have at least a C average, will have the option of taking the cumulative exam, except for specific courses that are actually state-required. And I'll mention those in just a moment. So if a senior chooses to take the exam, it will not have a negative effect on the student's overall grade. However, students who are seniors that do not meet the attendance requirement shall be required to take the cumulative exam, and that exam will count toward their final grade. EOC tests will serve as a cumulative exam in those courses because that's designated by the State Department of Education, and that will count as 20% of the course grade, which is required. And seniors cannot exempt from any EOC tests, and the grading requirement will be the same as if it was for other students. Cumulative exams in non-EOC courses will count as 10% of the course grade. And then AP classes will not give a cumulative exam that counts 10% of the final grade as the AP exam will serve as that assessment. So those are the revisions that we have made to that policy.
You didn't state in there, you said that if they take the test, it will not negatively affect the grade. But I'm assuming that if they made better, that it would positively affect it.
Absolutely.
It isn't stated, but I'm just making that assumption.
We didn't want to discourage that student that might have a 78 or an 88 from taking the exam. They take the exam, they may be able to pull their grade up to the next grade level. But we didn't want to discourage them by giving it a chance to lower their grade. So it does put kind of a senior privilege in the policy.
The cumulative exams for non-EOCs, how are you going to handle that with the software? I thought the exams would, in other words, each teacher would have had either 10% or 20% weighting in their exam book, in their grade book. You with me?
Yes, you can.
Right. I mean, that's how they would run their calculations. So are you all going to have to control all that?
I think it's already, it'd be reset.
We would through Power School. So of course, we're a 10% exam. That leaves 90%. So each of the four quarter grades would be, well, I guess it's actually semester grades. So it'd be 45% for each nine weeks, and then 10% for the exam. If they don't need to take the exam, if it's a senior who chooses not to take it, the two nine weeks would just count 50% as opposed to 45. So it will, Ms. Visage can make Power School average that for us.
I have just a statement. I graduated in a class of 975 seniors. Our valedictorian was a friend of mine. He had a full scholarship to Pitt. By December, he dropped out because he could not handle the examination that was alluded to. And I think we still see a lot of sharp people fail because they can't handle the pressure that they're about to see at the higher levels. And I'm really hoping that we can provide something that we, because our job is to train these kids to perform under pressure to some degree, you know? And, but like you said, is this the best we can do, I guess is what I'm saying?
I think.
You know, I'm just asking. Stakeholders, you know?
As Mr. Bagby alluded, this has gone to several different advisory meetings and has been edited several times. There's no way, I've come to the conclusion, there's no way we're going to get consensus on this. I'll be perfectly honest, there are some principals who liked it when it was all seniors getting the chance to exempt. There are some parents at the last parent advisory meeting that said, "Just make everybody take it, no exceptions." We have some people who are still saying, "Let's make seniors have an A if they're going to exempt." There's, I just don't think we're going to get consensus. We tried to kind of shoot for middle ground where we thought, you know, as best we could. I do agree with Mr. Bagby. I think we've listened to everybody and done the best that we can to try to find middle ground because there, like I said, there's no way we're going to put a policy in front of you that's going to make everybody happy.
Any further questions?
Okay. I lost my notes.
Honor roll, class rank.
Okay.
IKD.
Next one, Ms. Simmons, your policy IKD, honor roll and class rank.
And I'm going to kind of pinch hit here. We kind of had a little side fountain bar there. I was in the high school principals' meeting when this was discussed. And after Ms. Welch addressed you on this policy, I do want to just clear up a couple of things. It does, this does make the class rank, honor roll, class rank policy more stringent. The reason that this ever came up as a topic of discussion was because the changes in the state uniform grading policy over the last two or three years have made it much easier to have a high GPA. And I guess one thing I want to make sure everybody understands, even in a CP class, which nowadays, a CP class is the lowest level of class that any high school in South Carolina is offered, is allowed to offer. There is no general track or below basic track. None of that exists anymore. It's CP honors and then AP in dual credit. If students go through their high school career in all of their Carnegie Unit classes and make 90s, straight through, which, I mean, that's not going to happen, but theoretically if that happened, they just made a straight 90, which is the lowest A you can make, you would have a 4.0 grade point average when you finished. If you went through all CP classes and made 100s for your whole career, no AP, no honors courses, just CP classes, straight through, but you made 100 in all those classes, you would have a 5.0 GPA when you finished. So every grade, every point you get in that class between 90 and 100, your grade goes from a 4.0, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3. So if you have 100, you actually get a 5.0. An honors class adds .5 to all that. So in an honors class, if you had a 90, it would be a 4.5, but a 100 would be a 5.5. And in a dual credit or AP class, it adds a full 1.0 to the CP. So if you have a 90, it would be a 5.0, and a 100 in an AP class would be a 6.0. So of course, it's impossible to get a 6.0 grade point average because you can't take AP classes your whole career. You have to take some below that. So it would not be impossible for a CP student to have a GPA of 4.25 or higher. They would have to have, you know, a couple of 93s, 94s, averaged in with some 90s to get up there. But it's not impossible for a CP student to have that GPA. Obviously, it's more difficult, but it's not impossible. And as far as students asking to audit courses because they're CP, that does exist right now. We have students every year that want to take, the best example I can come up with is a PE4 class that's a weight training class that we offer. That's a CP class. A lot of students want to take that as juniors and seniors because they just enjoy working out for their sports and things like that. But they may, if they're an honors student, they may not want to get a grade for that because it theoretically could pull their GPA down. So auditing, we allow our students to audit classes because we want to encourage them to take things and get the experiences and the knowledge. But it is counterintuitive to make a kid get a grade for a class that could actually lower their GPA. The state, I would argue the state did this several years ago when they incented GPA and competition with GPA with the lottery-funded scholarships. Once the state said you can get a life scholarship if you meet this criteria, you can get Palmetto Fellows if you meet this criteria, then it, all of a sudden, it made the GPA game financial. Now, kids go through and they figure out what they have to do to get a life scholarship, what they have to do to get Palmetto Fellows. And they are looking at the hundredths of a point on their GPA because it's important. It means that they may or may not get a scholarship. So the GPA game is real, and there are kids that are very competitive. I would argue that the auditing is a good thing because it allows a kid to take a class, still learn the content, still go to class every day and participate, but it would not have a chance to have a negative effect. The only classes that could have a negative effect would be CP classes for a very, very small number of students. If you're, the only way it could have a negative effect is if your GPA is above a five. Probably 2% of our students have GPAs above five, maybe? I mean, we're talking a very, very small fraction of high school students would want to audit a class because it could pull their GPA down. Most of the time, you take weight training, and let's just be honest, if you show up every day and do what you're supposed to do in weight training, you're probably going to get 100. That's a 5.0. Very few students are going to have their GPA pulled down with a 5.0. A handful in each school, but not many. So anyway, the reason that this was being brought to you was because the numbers of students that qualify for these honors, and I will get you, I meant to have it printed tonight, I will email you the statistics we compiled for last year because we took the number of honor graduates, the number of high honor graduates. And we just noticed anecdotally that the high honor banquet, it seems like there are more and more students here every year. And it's true because the state made it easier to get a higher GPA. So the principal said, "Well, we need to kind of balance this." The state went through this same thing. When we made the GPAs easier, they noticed the lottery tuition scholarships that they offer for life scholarship and Palmetto Fellows, they noticed that they were running out of money. They didn't have enough money to offer all the scholarships that were being earned because it became easier to get life scholarships and Palmetto Fellow scholarships. So they're having to do similar, have similar conversations. If I recall correctly, and I'll send you the email, these new numbers, high honor at 4.75 and honor graduate at 4.25, I think high honor graduate, it was going to be in the neighborhood of 9% to 10% of students, even at that number. At the lower number, it was more like 25% of students, I believe. And to say that 25% of your students are high honor graduate, that might be a little bit too high. I mean, if you're going to qualify.
How will this affect our students here as it relates to other schools across the state?
Those two designations, honor graduate and high honor graduate, don't have anything to do with scholarships. Scholarships have to do with that number. So.
Yeah, but which number? Is it 3.0, 3.5, 3.75? If it's easier in, say, Podunk County to get the GPA they need to get, to get the scholarship than it is Oakley County, is that fair to our students? I'm asking, I don't know.
Right. So to qualify for a life scholarship, it has nothing to do with whether they're honor graduates or high honor graduates. Those are designations that we make.
3-0 in the top 20.
So 3-0 in the top 20. So to get a life scholarship, you have to have a 3.0 and be in the top 25% of your class. So that's, that's, has really nothing to do with this designation. This is just a designation that means honor.
It's the top 2, the state's requirement then for the 3.0.
The state uniform grading policy is something that was passed at the state board of education level, and it is the grading policy all high schools have to follow across our state. And that's what determines whether you become a life scholar or a Palmetto Fellow scholar. These are just designations for Oakley County School District.
There are other life scholarships. You can score certain score on SAT, ACT.
1100 on SAT or 24 on the ACT.
But the GPA, the high honor or honor grad has nothing to do with life scholarship. If you got a 3.75, you don't qualify for a life scholarship if you're in the top 30% of your class. If you have a 3.75, you may or may not be an honor grad. It's not going to affect one or the other.
The discussion was really, it boiled down to high honor grad should be, I mean, that should be really difficult to achieve. And if 25% of students in a graduating class were becoming high honor graduates, is it really the elite designation that we call it? That was the discussion amongst high school principals. And like I said, I'll get those numbers. And I'll even, I'll ask Ms. Gibson to put that chart from last year. It doesn't have names or anything like that. It's just purely numbers, statistics from last year. We can even attach that to, maybe somehow we can attach it to the, we can put it in the information for next week.
Make it an exhibit.
Make it an exhibit for next week so you'll have that and the public can see that as well.
So all the GPAs are based on what the state has provided in the way of a grading scale?
That's correct.
So we're not deviating, we're not creating a tougher grading scale. We're using what the state's given us. And all we're doing is classifying this group of kids. 4.25 is going to be considered high graduates, honor graduates, pardon me.
And also, the revised policy is not beginning this until 2024 for that, the first group that would be starting as ninth graders to begin that policy then.
So this year's current eighth graders would be the first ones to have this because the high school principals felt very strongly that it would not be, I guess, kind of fair to throw this out during someone's high school career after they've already started.
Thank you.
The other discussion? All right, I guess we'll see it again. Thank you. You want one more time?
One more time.
Okay.
All right, it's that time of year for strategic plan updates. It's that time of year for strategic plan updates, both at the district level and the school level. So we will be looking at our performance school areas on both the district and the school strategic plans. We look at our student achievement goals, our teacher administrator quality, school climate, and then at the district level, we look at gifted and talented. Our summer school programming is another area. We complete a portion of the plan there. And then our district proficiency-based systems, what each high school and Oconee Academy are doing with PPEX, virtual school, credit and content recovery. Both the district and the schools both complete a reading plan that correlates with the Read to Succeed Act that was passed. So Ms. Harrison and I communicate on these updates. We sent something out to our principals and APs last week with all the directions on how to make those updates. We take the information and data we get from the schools on their school reading plan to update the district plan. So we're looking at how we're doing on teachers, getting the endorsement classes finished, the types of intervention programs we're offering for struggling readers, professional development we're doing with teachers, just so we can evaluate how we're doing on working towards goals related to literacy. Dr. Bibb and I met last week to start getting our data collected on the district side. We will meet again on March the 17th. District reading plan information is gonna get started, it'll get updated on April 2nd after Ms. Harrison receives that information from the schools. Our hope is to have everything to y'all like the week of April the 13th to review before our April the 20th meeting for discussion. And of course, once you get it, if you have any questions for me, feel free to reach out to me about that. And then we'll get everything submitted to the state by the 24th, which will be ahead of schedule so we can, you know, make sure we have everything in there completed and submitted correctly.
Any questions?
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like some work for us. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, the next section is a discussion and possible action on Seneca Middle School property update. Mr. Handy?
Yes. Okay. Well, we could probably talk about this for multiple hours, but we're gonna try to keep it in a timely fashion. Obviously, you know, this has been a long process, but we feel like now we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We've been working on this for a couple of years, but we think that we are in the process of acquiring the best pieces of property to give us the site for the new Seneca Middle School. It has excellent proximity to Seneca High School with sidewalks on both sides the entire way, and it's also a great location for our elementary schools as well for access. Want to remind everyone that we're making a 50-year investment for the community and for the school district. When we build a school, our goal is to have it last 50 years for us and get that much use out of it. And we still have a goal to occupy in August of '23, but the caveat is that will depend on the cost of construction and how much money we can generate from our bond sales and get paid off to make sure we have the necessary funds for the actual building. So what we're gonna share is a map that Lisa Semery from across the street, we're very thankful to her that she did for us to kind of highlight the three pieces of property that we're looking at. And we have them by map number, and you have a handout with the map numbers and the acreage for each tract. And so what we have here are four basic pieces of, of land. You see 053 to the bottom left. 002 are the roads, and that makes up a little over three acres of it, but they, on the maps, they were listed as separate, although we talked to attorneys and made sure we were getting that with the property for 053. You also see 111, which is the biggest piece of property, but it was kind of divided by what I have termed over the course of two years that we've been looking at this property, this general area. The sharp fin, which goes right into the middle of 111, so 101 kind of comes with the, with the territory. And actually, 101 was part of our initial area that we brought to you, and we talked about doing with the garrison property. And that fell through when one of the, the landowners didn't want to, to do their part and sell then. So we went back to the drawing board. This was honestly our, our first choice from the get-go. We don't think that you can get a much better location in, in Seneca to have a, a middle school. We've done all the testing. DOT's been there. They've done their testing. School facilities was there with them. And there will be less improvements needed on this site than the, the previous site we were looking at. We are scheduled to close on the, the four pieces with three different owners on Wednesday, March the 25th. We're not going to give out all the information. We're gonna talk about the acreage and the total price, but we're not gonna give out the, the other information until we make sure we've got everything closed. But, but that's what we're looking at now. So we're looking at four pieces of property that have a total acreage of 43.82 acres. And the price for those combined, 43.82 acres is 1.784 million dollars and 400 on top of that. So 1,784,400 dollars for the property that we have agreed to purchase.
Thank you. Any questions? Just for clarification, this pretty much has already been graded for us since...
A lot, a lot of it has. There'll have to be some, some cut down. If you come out of James's Way, which is right across from Cross Creek, to look to the left, they've told us, the traffic, initial traffic study says there will not be a red light there at this time. If you know, if you're up the road a little bit farther, Seneca High doesn't have a, have a red light. They have an officer directing traffic, and that may be the case here. But their initial study showed that we did not have to put in a, in a red light, but there will be some of that. About where it says Wells Highway on the map, we'll have to cut down a little bit. There will be some site work, but not near as much as there would have been at the other potential location.
And there is no significant widening of roads, right? Except the backside of 002?
002 potentially may have to widen it a couple of feet on either side for the buses, but that has yet to be determined. They're gonna actually make a state buses out there to, to do that. But that's not a deal breaker by any stretch of the imagination. So we'll have to relocate some power lines, be part of it, but...
In all likelihood, Lancaster Drive will be closed.
Yeah, the school will probably sit on Lancaster Drive.
That will probably become our front and back driveways, but the school will probably sit about where Lancaster's written.
Close to that. We, yeah, I mean, it's, we, the folks from DOT and the school facilities office said it's one of the best sites for a middle school that they've visited. I mean, they just say it's that good of a site.
All right.
So what we, we would ask for you guys is to give us final approval, to sign off on everything, do the closing on the 25th, and then we can get more specifics after that. I want, I want to wrap it up with a nice little tidy bow before we do, do much more.
Let's see what we can do for you. Is there a motion to instruct the administration to finalize the purchase of the tracks? And it's 253-0003-053, 253-0003-002, 253-0003-111, and the last one is 253-0003-101, at the total cost of $1,784,400 for the purpose of the construction of a new Seneca Middle School.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we instruct the administration to finalize the purchase of the following four tracks. for the purchase of constructing a new building for Seneca Middle School.
Can you say that amount one more time?
Yeah, please repeat.
The total price of $1,784,400.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Do you have a second? All in favor? Oh, I should say, pardon me. Are there any, any other discussions or? All in favor? All opposed? It passes. I'm not gonna read this again. Okay. Well, I guess this wraps up my first meeting, and there was no loss of life, so I, I appreciate you all coming. And we're going into executive session. That concludes the open session of this meeting. Thank you for being here. We will move to closed session and return after that for any actions required for employment recommendations and changes. Thank you again.